Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening a special meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me in the room, we've got council members Andrew Cook, Harmon, and Holmes. We understand that our mayor ported his own way along with council member Peters and Johnson. And our city attorney is participating virtually along with council member McKeever. With us opening the meeting, I'll go ahead and ask if there is a motion to adopt our meeting for the meeting.
Second?
Motion's been made by council member Holmes, seconded by council member Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in fair or consistent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it and that motion passes. First item for a discussion is item 2025-429, information regarding municipal service districts. We'll recognize Mr. Steven Howard Luke, our budget performance director for this item.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon to you and members of the council. This is just a short follow-up to the presentation and discussion that was had on September the 22nd regarding municipal service districts. There were several questions we had from the area council. Just wanted to provide kind of what we were able to find and some research and some responses. The first kind of area of questions, talking about boundaries and also the topic of changing of boundaries. So we did confirm that any boundaries within a municipal service district must be contiguous. And then if you had one already established and you wanted to make changes to say extend the boundaries of that district, there are some requirements similar to the creation of a district. Before you get to that, requirements, the area they're adding would have to be contiguous. The area would need to require the services of the district. You provide a report similar to a report that's provided before you create a district showing your current and proposed boundaries, that it meets the standards and requirements of a municipal service district, how you plan to extend the services. And then there are similar public hearing and notice requirements and a passage by ordinance. And so you essentially go through the same process as creating a district, just kind of providing the information for the area you're extending to. You're providing the same notice, the same public hearing requirements, things of that nature. One question we tried to provide some research on, there was kind of an inquiry of, you know, is there a perfect time or is there a time to add a municipal service district while your downtown is experiencing natural growth and development? So we couldn't find any specific research studies. We did reach out to the faculty from the UNC School of Government. We talked with faculty that have written papers on municipal service districts and downtown development. And they also passed a question on to one of the school government professors that deal with economic development. They could not confirm any specific research to the topic. They did provide kind of some of their perspective in that the impact and timing is very, could be very context, excuse me, context-specific. Things that could come into play would be what your property tax rate that's set for the area, how the revenues are spent, and other factors. You know, every downtown and city has its own unique factors and they think that would play more in a part than kind of a sweet spot of, you know, year X in development is the best time to add one, or do it before this or after that. We did go and look at the top, the largest 15 municipalities in North Carolina and research. Do they have a municipal service district? If they do, what's the tax rate and when was it established? So Charlotte currently has six. Their most recent one was approved in 2022. And you see the different tax rates, you know, for those districts. I will note that Charlotte districts one, two, and three kind of overlay on top of one another. And so Charlotte one is this small subset. Charlotte two includes all of Charlotte one and then some more. Charlotte three does the same. And so those are the rates kind of on top of one another. Raleigh has two, one for their downtown and one for around the Hillsborough Street area. You see Greensboro and Durham there. You see Winston-Salem, Fayetteville, one of the higher rates, but also probably the earliest year established. If I recall correctly, that is, I think shortly after the legislation allowing municipal service district was created. And so they jumped in early. Cary has municipal service district, but there is no tax affiliated with it. Wilmington, another one of the more recent ones, 2016 was that year established. Concord, I guess you can call them one of the earlier adopters compared to these other larger cities, 2002. Again, one of the higher rates. Asheville is the most-
Any of you what that Concord one is, like where in Concord?
Don't have those specifics. We can provide that information. Asheville is the most recent of the larger cities. Just 2024, having that established, it just recently went to effect. Their tax rate's 8.77 cents. Greenville, North Carolina, Apex and Jacksonville do not have municipal service districts. In Gastonia, 20 cents, one of the higher rates, but also you look at that year established. And so it seems the earlier ones established, other than those few in Charlotte, seem to have the higher rates. And so those were kind of the extent of the questions that we had. And you have to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
I didn't hear the answer to if we were, say, trying to do more of Maine from North Maine to South Maine, but it went through the market district. Was there a way to exempt the market district so they didn't get a double tax or no?
So there are two avenues that could be approached through this. One is through how the boundaries are created, following having to be contiguous, but they could be drawn out of the district. There is also a exclusion from the, you can exempt a property from the district when it's created, but that needs to be petitioned by the property owner to city council and then council considers it based on, you know, a myriad of factors and then can be done through that.
Thank you.
So why is Cary having municipal service district without tax?
Sometimes to define a certain downtown, there are some other-
Other funding sources available?
Yeah, and other allowances that you can provide. They just don't raise revenue through a property tax to fund any services they provide.
Any other questions?
Thanks for the research.
Yeah, Steve, I appreciate the research. Can you go back to, I think it might have been slide number two maybe? Can you go to the next slide? Yeah, I think, and this could be a bit laborious to find out, but a lot of those municipalities, I mean, some of it, we probably know just from knowing some of them. So like if you go to the next slide, you probably get an idea of when some of these. I can, I can tell you, I mean, it feels like Charlotte and Raleigh have had downtowns forever, to varying degrees, I'm sure. I think the hypothesis, if I can use that word, Dr. Harmon, is that you don't want to put something that can be some kind of inhibitor to growth if it's too early in the process. If you feel like right now we haven't hit a sort of tipping point where organically our downtown is set to take off. There's a lot we're still doing to catalyze growth. We don't want that to stunt it in a way. And I think if that's the question, I look at a lot of these cities. And, you know, if I ask the question, do I think on, in any one of these cases, they put those in at a point that could cripple their downtown? It's hard to know probably with, with every single one, but some of these I'd make the guess to say they put it in maybe after they were going. I don't know. What, any thoughts on this here?
I don't know that you can draw a firm conclusion to say that. You know, clearly, you know, some of these were put in probably before the downtowns looked the way they do now, where they were experiencing growth. Others might have been after some of the growth could have had occurred. I don't think there is a way to draw a conclusion, which is that's what we were trying to ascertain when we looked at these different municipalities that had them. And it was just really the hard, hard to draw that kind of correlation.
Yeah. I can provide just some context to, you know, did look a little bit more into Asheville since they were so recent. And one thing, you know, this wasn't the first go-around that Asheville had attempted. There had been, I think, 2012, there was a, seemed to be another effort that did not end up in the creation of one. And some, Wilmington, similar, Winston-Salem, it took a couple of times, you know, some wide gaps in between. But one thing with Asheville is it was kind of driven by not just a good majority of downtown stakeholders through businesses, trade association groups, things of that nature. They were kind of the organic of getting that before it was brought forward to city council. And that was, in some of the materials that Asheville put together, they were kind of, that was made clear multiple occasions in kind of explaining through their press releases and things like that. And so, I don't know, you know, that's specific to Asheville, of course, but that was just some context on what was driving the most recent one that's been approved.
Yeah. Well, it's kind of interesting because Asheville, I mean, their downtown is happening, right? I mean, and they obviously felt the need to do an MSD, which is kind of interesting. To look that up and see why they felt now after all the years of all this stuff.
Did he say it's for the downtown? Sorry. Did you say the one in Asheville is for their downtown?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Has anybody unwound MSD? I mean, they did it and then they said it didn't work like they wanted. Or do business owners petition them to have it undone?
I'm not aware of any. I will note, kind of adjacent to that, Fayetteville, when they created theirs in 1978, included a requirement that it had to be reaffirmed every five years. And so, so they essentially re-improve it every five years. That is very unique. I have not found in any research that any others are kind of have something that built into when they created it. But in essence, it's a, it's a function of the annual budget. It can be, you set that tax rate, and so that tax rate by any future council, if you have one, could set that tax rate to zero or say we're not gonna continue on.
That, that part, that may be my first time I heard, heard that mentioned, is that each year when you're establishing a tax rate for the, for the city property tax, you're also deciding what the property tax is for this MSD?
Yes, it'd be-
If it's gonna have some additional-
It'd be a separate kind of whereas within your adopted budget ordinance. You're setting the tax rate for the overall city and then you'd have a separate tax rate for your defined municipal service district.
So some of these rates that are here could have grown to what they are now? Like, I mean, right now it's 14.89 cent in Fayetteville. Do we know that that, it was 14.89 when they set it?
This is just what their current rates are. And so, yes, there can be fluctuation from year to year. Green, I'll say, just note, Greensboro was eight cents until about, I believe, fiscal year 2020 or fiscal year 2021. So then they went up one cent. I don't know the background of what caused that one cent increase, but it had been eight cents since 2005 until that one cent increase.
The interesting of these rates, is it alongside the other, our normal tax rate and budget weight here? Your comment about other cities maybe having the process led by downtown stakeholders and them really wanting, begs the question, have we heard anything? I know, for example, I know Business High Point was doing a survey at one point and maybe Downtown High Point may have been doing some kind of a survey too. But we haven't gotten any, any feedback from folks yet on anything like that?
We have not. And Downtown High Point had not, they, they have had some conversations with business owners, but they haven't had a formal process to seek input from business owners. I think a lot of the questions are, you're trying to narrow down what type of services might be possible. And I know the director has looked at, you know, what they would consider the, the top three. But at the end of the day, the services that are provided would be a determination made by this body. And the rate that is set would be determined by this body. So I think that you could always receive input from Downtown High Point of what they're hearing from business owners. But I think there was some discussion as to whether or not the process was really moving forward yet before she started doing some outreach. So I don't have anything that I can share from that group with you all that comes from the business owners.
Let me ask council this. Would you all be interested to hear what downtown stakeholders are saying about this?
Oh, absolutely. Definitely.
So I, I don't know, I want to be cognizant of what we're asking our team to do. But I think if this group would benefit from hearing it, whoever's capturing it, whether it's Downtown High Point, Business High Point, or another group, VisiHigh, whoever, I think we welcome the opportunity to hear, hear some thoughts on it. I know there's like a public hearing, if you want to go back, Stephen, to the slide where you talk about the process here.
I don't have all this included.
No, the one before that, right there. So public hearing and notice is that second-to-last bullet. So I know there's some kind of a public hearing at some point. But I think for this group, for us to even begin to escalate it, it feels like we want to know where downtown stakeholders fall.
I agree.
That's right. I think that would be good to know. But then I'd also ask you this question, Madam Manager. In previous presentations, you all noted timelines for us. We're starting to get pretty close to that timeline in terms of what our margin is to feel comfortable for it to be ready for this coming one to be voted on before JMTF, right?
So our, our initial timeline had, I think this comes before council, was it in March or February? In terms of making a final determination, I think it was-
On who would?
On, on-
If there was a, if the services were being contracted?
If the service was gonna be contracted out and then we would have to have the bid process. And we, we need a good two to three months to work through that bid process to have it ready for, for budget time. So we kind of worked ourselves back with a calendar. I think that the next decision point would be to have a conversation with Downtown High Point and try to figure out what timeline they might, they may need, what timeline they might need to be able to engage with business owners and get some feedback. And to also talk with Business High Point to get some feedback of what they heard collectively from the business owners that they've worked with and then to be able to share that with you. I just don't know if that would be ready for you all in November or that that's a December conversation until I'm able to talk with them.
Yeah. I, I think, and you all tell me if I'm wrong here, I think we want to hear on the side of, of hearing where folks are and not getting ahead of people rather than, you know, if this ends up being where we can't approve it this year, I, I would say this group wants to hear on the side of knowing where people stand on it probably first, right?
Well, staff is more than happy to work with, with those organizations and see what kind of feedback we can get to share with you all in advance of taking that next step in the process.
And any other questions for staff at this time?
Wait, could we at least do it like, like how we did the, it wasn't a public hearing, but it was a public, when we, back in, what was it, February, March, with the SMD down at Southside Rec Center?
There was a-
Presentation, like the people can come and give the input. So that we, so the people can come and-
Like some kind of community?
Yeah, yeah, like a community.
So not a public hearing, but at a community?
But sometimes once it's a public hearing, it's, it's already like, we're already thinking that and then everybody's all upset. But if this is more like a community input, like, hey, we're trying to make, we want to make our downtown great. Like, we, we want feedback and-
I think the, I think Downtown High, High Point could host a community event that could include those business owners. I think it would be best to let them gather that feedback since they're already talking to business owners about it. And I think accepting that invitation, having council members are more than welcome to come and listen to that feedback. I think could be a way for us to handle that.
That'd be fantastic, actually.
Does that work?
That's a great idea. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you. We'll transition to our next item, item 2025-430. Information regarding permitting and plan review processes for land development and construction projects. I know we're gonna recognize Mr. Chris Wayley, but Madam Manager, did you want to give any context for this?
Absolutely. So Mayor, members of council, the, the information that we're presenting to you today is really a snapshot of how things are progressing with the city meeting our goals and our benchmark in terms of the length of time that it takes for us to review permits. I know from time to time when you're out in the public, people make comments or you may get feedback in terms of what the process looks like or how long it takes. So what I'd asked for staff to have prepared today is just to give a little background because there are several departments that are involved in this, not just inspections, not just planning. But there are multiple departments that are involved in the review process. And depending on the type of project, whether it's a land use process or just getting a building permit, there are different timelines associated with those two. So this will provide an overview of those two processes and then also share with council where we are in terms of the city meeting those benchmarks. Another piece that I think is important is that staff is consistently reviewing our processes. Most frequently, we looked at the makeup of our technical review committee. And we have a team of folks where if you're going through more than three reviews with the city before your plans are approved, then at that point, we're calling in either the owners or your design team to have some direct conversations to try to figure out what the problems are, whether it's on our side or whether it's on the development side, which has been helpful. And also last year, we have made some changes to where if we have large-scale projects that we know, think about the, the name is losing me, the hotel. The most recent example was the hotel and also Ecolab, where we know those projects are happening. We meet with their design team on the front end so that we can help troubleshoot problems before they even arise. And that has also been very beneficial for the city. Also with that, Chris is prepared to present the information that we have and, and address questions that the council may have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. All right. So this may be my second time speaking for y'all. Chris Wayley, I'm the new inspection director. I don't look like Reggie. I'm a little bit different. So thank you for this opportunity, though. So here's kind of an overview of the process. And I'm kind of gonna break it down into two different groups. So you have land development, which is more of your site plans, your group development. That's pretty much moving dirt, making sure the use of the properties meets the zoning ordinance. And then you have kind of the construction side. And that's the vertical building going up or structure or something like that. So with these, we have kind of the two different processes and two different permitting processes with them. So over here to the left, you have all the land development records and there are a lot of them. Everything from site plans and subdivisions, designer views, final plats, all these different kind of land development. They're all dealing with your ordinance. Whereas the construction records, they're the residential construction, commercial, over the counter demolition. They're all dealing with most time the state building code or fire codes or things like that. They do have some ordinance in there too. But they're more of that state code-driven compared to the other. Process on a very high-level, simple breakdown. Somebody wants to come in and do any kind of development. They start with a permit application, they submit their documents, they submit what they want to do. It goes through a technical check, making sure it's, the plan is a plan, it's not a picture, things like that. Then it goes into a planner view. Planner view's processes of who gets turned on is based on what type of record it is. So imagine a residential construction permit. I don't need somebody from electric department to make sure. I need a transformer outside for a house. Most time that kind of power is there. So we have different disciplines that are automatically turned on based on what record that is to help expedite the process. Once it goes through planner view, that's our biggest and longest process. Because there, again, we're going from anything from a three-page planner view to HPU's new library was 382 pages. So that's just for the construction side. The site plan was about 40 pages. So those plans take a little bit longer time. Here and I give it to our staff, we turn it out in about three days for that 382 pages.
Really?
Yes, all trades.
So, so the, and I know this slide's coming up, what you all set your targets on, how quick you try to get stuff turned around. That's where regardless of how long it is, you're still trying to get it turned around that quickly.
Yeah, regardless of how big it is.
That's very impressive, by the way. Thank you.
Really, we have a very good staff. They, they understand the importance of time's money, especially when it comes to development. So we try to push things as fast as we can, but making sure we get compliance too. So there's, there's a balance there. Once it goes through the planner view process, I put approval because that's what everybody wants to go to. Sometimes it's not always approved on the first review. Sometimes it takes multiple reviews. So then it just kind of goes back through that little cycle. I kind of give it a basketball analogy, pretty much playing one side of the court to the other. Coming from us to review, goes back to the designer, back to us until it gets compliance. Coming from us to review, goes back to the designer, back to us until it gets compliance. Once it gets approved, then we normally go through our process of getting payments and making sure we have contractors, making sure we have everything dotted, I's dotted and T's crossed before we can issue the permit and then they go to work. So that's kind of the breakdown, very simple on how the process works to get a permit out the door. So as I was mentioning, who gets turned on for certain groups? This will be the land development side. This is the, I'd say worst case scenario, but this is the maximum amount of people who would ever be turned on for a land development permit. I know it's kind of small, so I'll kind of read it a little bit off to you. It has the energy departments, our electric inspections departments, fire, plant development, public services, engineering department, and transportation. All these groups have different reviewers, so each one of those gold or orange boxes are different reviewed people who are actually looking at plans for these different land development permits. Summing our 2025 to date, we've issued 26 permits. That's up to September 30th. The goal for the department is to have it reviewed in 10 business days. That's the goal. Right now, we're averaging three business days. So that's average. So don't go out and say, you know, we're getting everything done in three days. That's an average review. Some takes a lot less time because it's not very heavy on their end. Like when I do a land development review, I'm looking for ADA accessibility. I'm looking to make sure the building's situated in a lot for building code. So my review is very easy. When it comes to plant development, they're having to look at the entire ordinance for that review, so it takes longer time. Same with engineering, public services, all those groups, so they take a little bit longer. But there again, the average is three days.
Chris, in politicians speak, average is everything.
Hey, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Say year to date's 26, how does that compare to the same time last year? Do you know?
I do. So last year, it is a little bit down. We kind of all know this. Development's kind of gone down a little bit. I'd like to actually have the numbers on the next slide. I'll have those.
I heard it in slow.
It is slow. But I'll kind of give you a little more context when we get to that slide, too.
Chris, I also wonder, and I saw the slide on Friday when you all sent it out, but I am curious, I can't remember if this is going to come up. That's 26 issued, doesn't tell us necessarily how many hit your door.
That's correct.
And get sent for some kind of review, like how many? Do you know the number of how many reviewed?
I do not off the top of my head. It is a substantial number. So a bunch of stuff comes in. So this is just looking at true land development site plan reviews. Like I said, if we go back to this other slide, you have all these other permits that get issued, too. And that's not included in this 26 number.
Yeah.
Okay. But I have, so some of the reports are run monthly, is how many projects get submitted every month and then how many get issued. Because I want to see that correlation of how many are just dying off or having to go still through a reprocess. So I can get you that data, definitely.
Thank you. Chris, do you have to have a fully developed site plan to get a permit?
To get the permit, yes. So, well, let me back that up. So it depends. I'm going to say that. That's the better answer. That's what I always tell everybody is it depends. It depends on what you're doing.
Sure.
If it's a brand new site where you're going from trees to a fully developable site, more than likely, we will need a full site plan for that. Can we phase a project? Absolutely. We can do that.
So even if say versus the developers not necessarily 100% sure what's going there, you can phase it and then later in the phase, they develop the site plan and you get your.
Yeah, so we can issue a grading permit where they can start grading the work, give the ratio control and things like that, and then keep moving forward. Yes.
One more question while we're on a roll here with the question. So are our site plan requirements the same as most other municipalities all across North Carolina?
So I'm going to say this just from my experience from other jurisdictions I've worked with, everywhere is different.
Okay.
So it's all in what you want your town to look like. That's how you make your ordinance match what you want the town or division of the town to be. So you can change based on rural county to Charlotte.
But as far as site plan requirement?
Site plan requirements mean what's coming in is actually a review or?
Or that it's required for development?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
That's pretty much across the state.
One more question. Say for instance, you're issuing a grading permit, that's still three day turnaround?
Yes, sir. Well, land development's a little bit different. Average is three days.
Average is three days.
10 day review.
There it is.
And 95% of the time, we're hitting 10 days.
So the 5% where you're not hitting within 10 days, is that what Madam Manager was talking about? After that, you have to sit down with the folks?
It could be that. It could be we're waiting on that one piece of documentation to come in. It could be that we're in communication with them instead of turning it down and saying, nope, here's your stuff, send it back to us, you know, tomorrow. We're waiting on it. So some things like that can be the reason that you have that 5%.
Councilmember Harmon, one additional piece with that is when we started, we turned on comments in Asella. And we did that over the summer, I do believe.
So live comments where they can actually see them.
Mm-hmm. What was that?
November of last year.
November of last year. So that was our way of actually being a little bit more transparent so owners can see whether or not the delay is like staff waiting on something or if it's one of their subs or contractors that were waiting on information or whether it's an RQ waiting for staff to review. So as an owner, they can go in and they can see where the delay is occurring in that process, too.
Which is huge. I can tell you, we were in a conversation in 2024 with a property owner who was pretty upset because he thought all the delay was on our side. And when the entire report card pool would recognize it wasn't like that. So I love that comments are live. Can I tell you what my brain processes when I think about the ping ponging effect, like you say, going from side to side? Think about chess, how you hit the little clock and like you, like it's no longer on you, it's on them now. I, in some of this, things from time it comes in to time approved, that's not under our control. Like you say, a lot of things can happen. But what is under our control is when we hit that button again for it to go back over to the.
Correct.
And I do wonder where that lands because it feels like if that's under your control, and granted, it's not perfect, but we'd love to know where we stack up with that. Because again, it's, I mean, if we're waiting on something on their end, it needs to be noted that the ball wasn't, like time of possession was on them.
Sure. Sure. So I can speak to this on the construction side. So if we have a project that we haven't heard anything back for in a month, we're reaching out to them and saying, hey, where are we at? And then we're making a note, we've reached out to XYZ person to say, we've reached out and wondered where it's at. After three or four attempts and they're saying, we haven't got anything, we're not doing anything, and most time close the record, they resubmit. So construction permits, that's kind of how we handle that. So we, one, don't have all these open projects that are just going to kind of weigh us down. But we're also reaching out and saying, trying to make that communication with them.
So what you're saying is, let's say you had a project where there is an electrical part and a plumbing part, and they submitted it and the electrical part's good to go, the plumbing part's needed, you're not going to stop the entire job because they need to fix one of them. You can allow them to do the electrical, they come back with the, to fix the plan on the plumbing part so they can at least continue the, or stop the project.
So that's going to be it, depends. And the reason I say that is sometimes plumbing does not bother electrical at all, but it could bother building, which could mess up something else. So imagine a storm drain's going to have a building going down a column to a footing. That could change if I put it here or if I put it there. So maybe I could have say, okay, we're going to allow you to do your footing foundation, but then by the time you get up to go do structure, we need your plumbing stuff in. We've done that, too. So that's a phased project.
It sounds like what you're saying, things that don't have dependencies on something else that is being held up, you'll let all that happen.
We can.
But if you got a dependency on this here and it's contingent on this getting done, you just got to get that done. That's good.
There again, here's our average review times. Average review time in days, there again, our goal for land development is 10 business days. This is back to 2022. And I pulled out these three groups because they're the ones that are very dependent on the most reviewers. So site plans, group developments, and subdivisions. So site plans are that individual parcel, individual building. Group developments are most time individual parcel with multiple buildings. And then subdivision would be anything from like Skybrook or any of these other residential or Plaldium South, anything like that, where you got multiple parcels, multiple buildings, all in one kind of subdivision. So if you look at these, these are the dates, so 10 being the highest number. As you can see, the highest we ever had on average is six days, and that was in 2023. If you look at all the most recent ones, they're all the lower numbers. And there again, that's because of the software we've added in using EPR, having that one-on-one where we can actually communicate with the client or they can communicate back to us with live comments. And also it kind of cleans up where staff knows this is due or this is due or this is due instead of having to go dig for what their projects are that they need to look at.
Chris, that's really helpful to see in 2022, how it was sort of an outlier there, six days on average for group development. And then, or is that 2023? Sorry, I'm looking at, yeah, yeah, it's 2023, six days on average, then back down to three. And seeing that improvement, that's really good to see.
So 2023, though, was one of our busiest years. There we had a lot of subdivisions, a lot of, a lot of new projects coming in, so their timelines went up just because of sheer volume, too. So looking at the construction side versus land development, views are a whole lot less for the construction side. We still have some intermingling, so you'll see that inspection service is still there, fire department's still there, planning development, public services, engineering. But here, we're talking about that vertical part. So year to date, year to September 30th, it's 655 permits that were issued. These are only residential construction and commercial construction permits, so this isn't all permits being issued. Our goal on inspection side is five business days, and we're averaging about two. There again, kind of going back to that, some reviews take longer. Like I said, with the library, that was a three-day review, a solid three-day review. There again, we're about 96% in our five-day turnaround. Like I mentioned before, that 4% or 5% difference, a bunch of my staff is, if I can push the permit out and hold it one extra day past our five days, I'd rather do that than have to send it back. They send it back in because that normally takes about two to three days for just the process. So we try to do that a lot, reaching out, saying, if you'll email us to me, we can push it in. There again, you look at residential and construction because there's the ones that have the planner view pieces in it. Commercial construction, very happy with being a one-day average in 2025 so far. And then our residential's three days, so that's very fast. So, questions?
Any questions for staff?
No question. I do have a comment. I was at the ribbon cutting for Race City Steel down on Prospect Street. Under no coercion from me or Peter Bishop or anybody, the owners of the company spoke extremely highly of our planning and permitting department and helping them to get to resolution and redo their building in an extremely timely manner. And they brought it up and commented several times during my stay there that they were thoroughly impressed with working with High Point, so.
Great.
Any other comments or questions? I will say credit to your team on this. This is really awesome to see this like this. I can tell you, one of the first calls I got after getting elected back in 2023 was to meet with a group of builders around a big table for them to tell me how slow we were. And I wish I had this slide deck.
They were trying to get the new guy on their side.
Thankfully, I just, I sent them to Damon and we were all good. But no, seriously, thank you for this. I think for all of us on council, we have to somehow be knowledgeable enough of all the things that happen across the city when we get questions. But some things, being able to see the numbers like this helps us have a lot of confidence. Seeing that one day turnaround this year feels good. And I know obviously the man could see that creep back up and we've got a really busy and full pipeline, which is a good problem to have. It could take that out a little longer, but certainly we're efficient in terms of technologies and processes. And we have a culture. That's what I heard you say. I mean, you said it. You said time is everything, right? Time heals deals. And people in development, that's their mantra. And if we're knowing that and doing what we can to be supportive, I think I can speak for this group in saying that it helps meet a lot of goals from economic development to housing, so on and so forth. Us being able to be a good partner means everything.
And hopefully adding uses to the historical industrial corridor will make those permit rise.
Yeah, we're like old bills, they're fine.
Madam Manager, would love to, so a couple more thoughts here. And I know Madam Attorney's on the line here, too. I know there's a bill that we've all been paying attention to in the General Assembly, which really decaps some processes in terms of permitting and inspections. We don't have to get all the way into it here. But I think I recall there was something they were trying to do in terms of the shot clock for how quick review gets done.
It does.
I feel like one of them was around like two days or something like that, or?
And the analysis that we've been able to do, we're already exceeding those timelines, actually. We're doing better than that. And what Reggie had done, Reggie Hutz, our former building official, had actually done an analysis for us because we wanted to see where we were in meeting those timelines. So if for some reason the shot clock was passed with the legislation, we'd feel pretty comfortable that we would be able to meet those. And Chris, if there's any part that I could say, we did go through that.
Yeah, there's current legislation about residential construction. It's 15 days. So we're hitting it with our three-day turnaround very easily. And then the site plans and all that stuff, there's still pending legislation. We're still exceeding that, like just like the board mentioned.
And then the other piece, Madam Manager, is when we'll get a chance to get another update on this, I know when you and I first spoke, we talked about.
We talked about a cadence for this. As you say, this is capturing a year worth of data, and I don't anticipate that the numbers would change much. So from a staff perspective, we were talking about doing this at least twice a year. And what I would really like to do is, last year, we started doing a snapshot of our development that was developed by our planning staff that we usually roll out the end of January, capturing a full year of information. I think this type of information should be included as part of that report as well, that we, we available for the public and visible on the planning site.
Agreed. I think, yes, twice a year. And I'll field the group. Anyone have any concerns about twice a year, us giving some kind of review on this?
No.
No. It feels like seeing these numbers gives us confidence. We set strategic goals for wanting to see housing and economic development, all these things go. Us seeing these gives us the confidence that we're doing what we can on our end. Certainly, there's a lot of conversation out there. There's a book called Abundance where the authors of the book talk about, you know, if you want to address the housing issue, the government's kind of cut through the red tape and be better and all these other things. Which a lot of that stuff I agree with, but it's clear that here at City High Point, we do a really great job of being a partner, to be efficient, to facilitate development. So I think it is important for this group to be able to know that and shout out for the mountaintops. As Chris said, we're getting everything out in two days, so.
Guaranteed.
All the attorneys start looking up, well, he didn't say everything. I'm kidding. Let the record reflect. We're getting on average at things out within two days, so. Thank you so much, Chris. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Our next item here is a closed session for attorney-client privilege, item 2025-438. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion is recognized, Councilmember Peters. Second goes to Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none of those, fair or disqualify, saying aye.
Aye.
Any gains? The ayes have it, and we're going in closed session.
Ratako session and motion to come out a special
And he gets, round a close session and motion to come out of special, some votes.
Take it.
Harmon, I think Andrew.
Andrew, yeah.
Any discussion, all of you favorite, we say five say aye.
Aye.
And he gets. Alright, we are.
Wait, let's see who's loud down here.
It sounds loud.